Okay, thank you, everyone. We apologize for the disruption and the delays, but it appears that we are ready to go. So I'm going to ask our clerk. It's 25, just before 25 after nine, we do have a number of delegations that are here to speak, so we are going to have to have some votes here to go beyond the 10 o'clock, so I will ask our deputy clerk to read a couple of things, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. The first motion that I'd like council to vote on is that council waive the rules to proceed beyond the hour to consider item 8.2.1, which is Report AD 112022 regarding the community improvement plans. And with that, I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, Councilor McPherson, and I'm going to open that vote. I'll now close the vote, and that carries. Thank you. And the second motion I'm going to ask committee to consider is that that item 8.2.2 regarding PD 3322 be deferred to the July 11th council meeting, and that item 8.2.3, which is Report LS 0922, and item 8.2.4, which is Report LS 1022, be deferred to July 25th Committee of the whole meeting. And with that, I'll ask for a mover, please. Thank you, Councilor Reimer. And I'll open the vote for you. Thank you. That vote carries. Thank you, Chair.
So if our presenters could proceed, we would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I'll do is I'll start again at slide nine because I think I was about halfway through it. So before you is a list of the incentive programs. So based on the program areas, there's a number of incentive programs for each of the program areas. So the proposed incentives, some of them are new, particularly some of the housing ones. Some of them, there's some modifications to them. And then, as was mentioned previously, within our development charges bylaw, as well as under the Development Charges Act, those have also been included in the Community Improvement Plan. It's really for information for applicants who are applying for grant programs, that they'll have all of the information in one place. So between what I would say, the three CIPs and this draft CIP, there really are a number of what I would call key differences. There is a wider range of affordable housing programs. There was very little affordable housing programs within the previous CIPs. I know we've mentioned this probably a number of times. We're not intending to incentivize standalone residential, because there is a market for this type, and there's no need to incentivize that anymore. So if you have a residential development that includes attainable housing, the intent is that the incentives will only be provided for those units that meet the definition of attainable housing. When you have residential units within a mixed use project, previously, the entire building was provided with a tax increment financing grant, for example. The intent of the new program is the incentives will only be applied to those units that meet the definition of attainable housing. And if the development includes commercial, it would also apply to the commercial floor space. There's also, each of the programs have particular conditions, particularly the attainable housing ones, so that we can ensure that the rental units remain affordable for a specified time period. And that's done through, as part of the approval process, there would be an agreement that would be registered on title. For ownership units, what's being proposed is a timeframe, and we're looking at five years to maintain ownership by the first purchaser. How that is done, it's also done as an agreement, typically in the form of a second mortgage on title. So anybody selling the property would be aware that the grant would have to, that purchaser would have to pay that grant back, or a portion of it. The reason for that is, is because it's, you don't want people just buying these units and basically selling them to somebody else within one year. Because if you don't have those rules in place, that likely will happen. For commercial units, we're looking at a minimum of 80% of the ground floor to contain commercial uses. As I mentioned before, it's very important to have commercial use as part of a mixed use proposal. It is a little bit harder for a developer to, you know, finish off the commercial units and get those occupied versus a residential unit, they will sell those right away. Some of the other key differences, as we've mentioned before, if the commercial development has 80% commercial floor space on both the ground and the second floor, it will have a slightly higher TIG grant percentage. We're also looking at, to encourage the construction of hotels, tourist accommodation, with a minimum of 30 guest rooms, we're provided with a higher percentage of a TIG. The intent is not to apply this to things like B&Bs, what we really need are larger scale tourist accommodation to keep people in the area. The previous CIPs had very little criteria. So for example, the Vineland and Beazell CIPs, if you were in the project area and you were a commercial use, you basically could apply and get approval for a grant. Now, there's much more criteria to be considered for approval. The reasoning for that is, we want to fund the best projects, not just all the projects. We're also looking at in line, and Lawrence is going to speak to this a little bit later, is in order to ensure that these programs are sustainable over the long term, for the TIG grants, we're looking at a maximum dollar value over the term. And in regards to development charge reductions, so what a lot of the newer CIPs are doing is, they're changing their development charge grants to what we call a development charge equivalent grant. So the dollar amount would be the same, the difference is where the funding source is. It would be funded out of the CIP account, rather than being funded through the development charges fund, because the problem with funding things out of the development charges fund is that you have capital projects, and you need to fund those capital projects for the community as a whole, but you can't replace those dollars by charging a higher development charge to another type of use, for example. So I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Kathleen, and good evening, members of council. So as members of council recall, back in 2019, as part of our economic development strategy, we did bring forward a new industrial and rural area CIP to help incentivize private sector investment here in our community, and of course, job creation. So the goal of the CIP is to help make our community attractive from an industrial and value-added agricultural perspective. We have seen success, and staff are recommending the continuation of this program. I'll bet with some modifications, as you can see on the screen. Our industrial rural area CIP supports council, part of supporting economic development and economic job growth here in our community. And of course, I'm fully supportive of this change, as it does help address our long-term financial sustainability for our CIPs, and allows us to continue our programming. This will also allow us to broaden our support for our programs, and ensure that we have much more impact here in our community. Kathleen?
The, sorry. The next slide, I'm going to turn over to Matt to speak to, please.
Thanks, Kathleen. Just to highlight a couple of points, as it pertains specifically to heritage grants, a little bit different here, as these particular types of grants, this program isn't necessarily part of the CIP suite, as it can be administered by the Ontario Heritage Act. That said, there are some important considerations that need to be made, especially while we're looking at things like funding sources for CIPs overall. Really, historically, with heritage grants, although not singularly a lot of money in the context of some of the other incentive programs available, there was no actual, specific identified funding source for it. So as a result of this undertaking, we're looking at these grants, not a lot of changes to the overall programs themselves, in terms of eligibility criteria and whatnot. A lot of that's very specifically outlined through provisions in the Ontario Heritage Act, just moving forward to make sure that we have a dedicated funding source, just because we know we're doing a lot of work with respect to looking at things like heritage conservation districts and some of those related studies. So we want to make sure that we're proactively planning in this regard, moving forward. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Lawrence is going to take us through the financial analysis slides.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, Matt. Good evening, members of council. So in regards to the financial analysis, it's something we committed to present back to council, once we did a more fulsome review or a deeper dive. And just for education for the general public, or people who may be watching this, is historically, our TIGs and DC reductions were meant to be offset either through increases in the tax levy, which were primarily growth-driven, or through available CIP reserves. The DC reductions that are offset from, that are offset from DC funds or reserves would have to be paid back over time if another funding source is not found. The funds for the DC funds and the dollars there are meant to go to fund growth-related projects. As council is aware, we completed a reserve study last year, which set the target thresholds for each applicable reserve. In the case of the CIP reserves, it was set at to have one to five years of the annual expected cash outlay. Up to today, so 2022, we've been able to fund these programs through utilizing the annual dividends from Penn West, a portion of the annual budget process of levy funding, and we utilize the reserves to address any funding shortfalls. The balance in the reserves historically was quite healthy, as the amount of funds required for the CIPs were relatively low. Based on our current financial outlook 2023 and beyond, we will not have sufficient funds available to continue as we did in the past. Simply put, we need to increase the amount of funds to meet our existing financial obligations, and we will need additional funds to make sure the program is sustainable if council decides to continue with the CIP programs proposed in the future. Next slide, please. As part of our financial analysis, town staff worked with Watson Associates to look at the existing CIP obligations, including DC reductions, our existing or contributing revenue sources, including our discretionary reserve funds, our forecasted spending, both our current obligations and proposed. And this includes multiple-year modeling or looking out forward, our existing DC reserves, and our projected DC, projected inflows of funds. Our reserve threshold min-max as a start was also considered. Staff then considered various ways and approaches to address the expected funding shortfall. The first option we explored was simply to address all funding shortfalls all at once. This included allocating funds to top up the DC reserves to meet the minimum balance or threshold we've established. This is also will cover off any unfunded DC, projected DC reductions, increasing the SIP allocation to match the forecasted obligations we have or currently project, and the allocation of or additional funds to launch new programs. This would represent a significant increase to the tax levy, starting at from 4% or higher, depending on how much you put into the reserve balance. And though it would ensure we dealt with all shortfalls today, we feel it would have the potential to divert funds from other areas. Additionally, as we meet our existing obligations, some of the funding under this approach would not be required long term as some programs sunset. The second option we explored was eliminating the new CIPs altogether, it's a simple matter, which would eliminate the need to have a CIP reserve, and it would eliminate, it would limit the impact to our residents, and as we would use the additional funds to top up the DC reserves or obligations we owe, and pay off our existing obligations. Eventually, over time, the need for funding would be decreased, and the funds could be used to support new programs in the future. Considering the year-over-year growth and the potential impact to future revenue growth, this approach is not again recommended. So this leads us to our third option for council's consideration. Next slide, please. So with our third option, the final option we considered was to increase the funds going into SIPs to align to our existing forecasted obligations. Our largest increase generally happens in 2024, and obviously, this can shift depending on how projects are completed or proceed through the pipeline. The projected demands would be met of the new programs through a decline or gradually declining balance in our existing obligations. And so doing so by also topping it up, we would not fully deplete the reserve funds in 2023, which is anticipated. Additionally, the increase is modest, so it considers our residents, it supports economic growth in the town by continuing the SIP through revised programs, and it considers additional controls like program caps. Partially, the reason why we're so successful when we're running into this challenge is, we're a victim of our own success. We started in 2020 with a forecasted CIP spend of 11,000, by 2024, expected to be close to, just south, or just below a 500K expenditure. So having a cap will allow us to forecast and better manage our funds, so we don't come into the same situation where we're requesting council to top up the funds. Additionally, we can target programs, we can manage cash flows a little bit better as well. Excess funds in a given year, not spent on the CIP programs or proposed programs or the existing ones, would go back into the CIP reserves and slowly repay the DC fund. It will take us a protracted amount of time, but I think it's prudent to do, and is somewhat fiscally responsible. The potential financial impact for the recommended option would be an estimated 1.5% to 2% levy increase, but it's dependent on actual spending and any forecasted projected spending changes year-over-year, and it's something we'll keep a close eye on. Next slide, please. I'll turn this over, I believe, to Kathleen again.
Yes. Thank you, Lawrence. So basically, in regards to the CIP update, there are a number of steps. Where we're at right now, before you tonight, we've got a draft CIP. There's still a number of stages that we have to go through to get this thing to the final finish line. That includes consultation with the stakeholders, that would be your business community, people who have accessed CIP funds before. Because this has to follow the same process as an official plan amendment under the Planning Act, there's a number of agencies, such as the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and the region, who will need to review the CIP. And there also has to be a formal public meeting. Once that's completed, the next step would be to finalize the CIP, present that to committee with the hopeful adoption by council sometime this year. So this is the end of our presentation. All of us are here tonight to answer any specific questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Kathleen, Paul, Matt, and Lawrence. And I will now open it up. Do members of council have any questions? Counselor Russell, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to staff for bringing this report and this new program out tonight. Again, I know a lot of work has gone into this, so again, I want to thank everybody for their efforts. Again, I think a lot of the key benchmarks that we were looking for when we asked for this review a little while back, I think a lot of them have been hit. So again, I'm very pleasantly, I don't want to say surprised, because I know staff have a habit of exceeding expectations. So again, I think I'm very, very happy that a lot of those benchmarks have been hit. Just a couple of quick questions. In the report, there was reference to the definition of attainable housing, and there was a number slotted in there for 2021, I think it was 468,000 and some odd change. Just wondering, is that for the average housing value, or is that for the value of a similar housing type in Niagara region? I wonder if anybody can give any insight from the staff on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So the upper threshold for affordable ownership housing, as Counselor Russell mentioned, is 468,000 and change. That information is provided by the region in consultation with the ministry. What's that based on? Within Niagara, there are, and I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but there are a number of income decibels. So what that is based on is, if you're at the, you know, the 20% income decibel, you are very much, have very, very difficulty even finding a place to rent. When you get up to the 60% decile, depending on the purchase price, you may be able to afford a house, although nowadays, the prices have gone crazy. So it's based on those income deciles. So anything under the 60% decile is how you come up with the definition of affordable housing. And then for rental housing, just to explain that further, it's based on the average monthly rent provided by the Canaan Mortgage and Housing Statistics.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kathleen. So just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. So that 468,000 to be deemed affordable for probably, assuming the following year, it has to be below that benchmark? It has to be below that, uh, that benchmark? The unit cost?
Yes, that's correct. So it has to be, that would be the maximum purchase price. So if a developer wanted to create, and, and I'm assuming it would probably be a small apartment, a small apartment for that price. That price is set based on the date of the, the year of the application. Hopefully we'll have 2022 numbers at some point. And then they have to, they have to then sell that unit for that price or less.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I think that is a great linkage to, uh, to make sure that we are creating some, uh, direct level of affordable housing. So I'm very pleased to see that. My, my second question, uh, goes, uh, towards the, the prudums line. And again, I don't foresee, uh, as, as that, uh, as that plan is built out. Maybe I'm, maybe being too for, too quick to say I don't foresee. But is there any, um, potential challenges down the road as far as our financing ability? If a, a large chunk of prudums, um, should happen to fall into this affordable housing number? Like I'm thinking of some of those larger towers. If for whatever reason, uh, at the time that they're built, uh, if for whatever reason, there's a housing market downturn, which I think is, I think there's some expectation that's going to happen sometime in the next decade. That those units could fall below that number either purposefully or unintentionally. And, uh, we could be on the hook for a good chunk of, uh, funding on that. Mr. Regan?
Kathleen, uh, you want to tackle that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, in regards to, uh, using a tax increment financing grant as an example, there's, there, it's, it's for a five-year term. There's a maximum cash outlay. So if they want to create more affordable units, that's higher than the, the maximum grant, that would be great. Probably won't happen. But there is going to be a cap as in regards to the total funding, whereas the previous CIP programs, um, the whole building was funded. So they had to provide 20% affordable housing units at a certain price based on that time. But the whole building was provided with a tax increment grant. In this case, it's only the affordable units or any commercial floor space, provided they meet the minimum criteria. Cause there are also some environmental and design criteria as part of any project. But there's also a, a cap, there's also a total cap, whereas we didn't have a, a total dollar cap in the past.
Okay, that's great. Again, I, I assume then that that also limits our long-term risk, uh, on having any of those overages come back to haunt us down the road. Thank you, Kathleen, for that. My last question, um, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to staff, is there, um, again, I saw that, uh, there was like a, basically a 10-year window, uh, of when we, the expectation was that these programs would run before there's any, uh, determination on, on their value. Is there a yearly review or a regular review that staff and council will be undergoing on a regular basis, uh, in the plan? Where we will be going through the numbers, uh, and kind of judging the viability for either the next couple of years or, uh, whatever that regular increment is going to be? Is there anything built into the, into the program of when these programs should be reviewed on a regular basis?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, um, there is a section on monitoring in the, in the CIP. For the first couple of years, it does take a while to get, like with what we noticed with some of the previous CIPs, it does take a while to get uptake. But you definitely need to review it at the five-year, five-year level. So what we found, like for example, our mixed use CIP, um, as part of this review, we did a fairly detailed review and changes in assessment. You know, job growth, taxes, those types of things. It does take a little while between construction and when the property is reassessed and we start collecting taxes to actually get that data. But at the five-year mark, you should do a major review of the programs.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McPherson, or Counselor Patrick Rivas, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Brene. Thank you very much for this. Exciting to see the new categories, uh, coming out of this. But, but, and again, this is this, this is this question about what's attainable. So having attended Professor Ian DeJong's presentation a couple of weeks ago on a Monday, uh, that the region put on at the, at the Niagara Falls Convention Center. So someone on Ontario Works would receive $731 a month. That wouldn't even cover the $1,001 of attainable rental supply, let alone food, all the other things. So it, how do we sharpen that number? Or can it be sharpened or is, and again, I'm not, I'm not sure how, uh, Niagara Regional Housing works. But is, is that difference made up through them?
So, Mr. Chair, and to answer your question, um, as part of the housing programs, we've had quite a bit of consultation with the region. They are reviewing their definition of affordable housing, um, because this is where we, we want to be consistent with the region because there are some programs that overlap. In the case of, um, you know, if a one-bedroom apartment is a thousand dollars and people can't, you know, obviously don't make enough money to afford that. Then they'd also probably have to apply for a rent subsidy from the region to top that up to be able to pay that, that, that rent.
Okay, okay. And then another question, if I may, Chair Brene, so probably to Mr. DeAnnie. So, uh, commercial and mixed-use tax increment will be subject to an annual intake window. So this is on page seven of 15 of the report. So it enables a priority ranking. So is that not going to create a, a, a situation where you need to have your application in, say, by January 1? If it's, if it's, if the intake window or will, will there be multiple intakes per year? And will there be a certain amount set aside per intake? Just curious about that.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Chair, through you. I'm actually going to turn to Director, uh, Dale, if I may.
So that, that criteria is for this draft CIP. So council, it, it's all going to come down to funding because you have to be able to fund it. You could establish, you know, one window, you could establish two windows. It's going to depend on the amount of funding you have available. But you, but if you decide to do one window or two windows or three windows, you just have to make sure you get the word out there so that people are aware of it.
Okay, and, and then on top of that, and to Chair Brene, if I may, a follow-up. You want the best possible project. So you just don't want projects coming in and chasing the dollars, correct?
That's correct.
So the, the, um, priority ranking will establish that.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, so as an example, um, the, if you look at the, the, um, I think it's section nine in the, in the CIP that has the table of the different criteria. There's quite a bit of weight towards, you know, design, environmental sustainability. So, you know, affordable housing, so depending on, on how you do your project. You know, the more things that you put into your project, the higher your ranking will be.
So it behooves the developers to, to?
Sharpen their pencils.
Thank you. And go through this and check those boxes. Fabulous. Thank you, Chair Brene.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Chair Brene, and, and, uh, tonight, tonight is for feedback, right? It's for, um, for commentary coming back. So, um, you know, pleased to see the, the focus, uh, that has been proposed on the various, uh, the four, the four types of CIPs. Pleased to hear that we're, we're not, um, feeling as though we need to support, um, general development in the market today. That, that we are turning our focus to these other areas. So I do have a couple of questions in these areas. And, uh, the first question is a question I've been asking for some time now is how do we qualify the buyer of the attainable housing? You know, when we look at, when we look at offering attainable housing, um, if we're not qualifying the buyer, I could go and live in that attainable housing, anybody here could, could go and live in that attainable housing. So we're, we're not, we're not getting the folks that need the attainable housing into that unit. So I don't see that in the report. You know, I'd see some improvements as far as keeping attainable housing attainable for a number of years. But I really think that's a major miss and really, um, makes me question supporting this, uh, type of a CIP when we're really not, um, necessarily helping out somebody that is needing attainable housing. So I wonder through you, Mr. Chair, if, if the director could, uh, comment on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, actually, I think that's actually a, a really, really good point. There are ways to go about that. We could add some additional criteria. And what that would require is in applying for an application, let's say it's a mixed-use project with X number of attainable housing units. We would ask the developer to qualify the people and how they qualify people. What's commonly used is, is income tax returns. Because that's, that's, I mean, even, even with some of the regional housing programs, that's what they use to determine, you know, what people can afford to do. So that, that is something that staff can, can consider as part of this project. So that's a very good point. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you for that answer. And, and I, I think it's, it's absolutely critical that we do come up with criteria. You know, maybe, maybe first-time buyers is also on that list, you know, that, uh, they, they qualify, you know, being first-time buyers. I just, I just want to, um, I just want to make sure that we're not throwing this out to the market and that the market takes advantage of us for what we're providing. We think we're providing attainable housing and, and we're paying for it through, through tax levy, basically. And yet we're, we're possibly not getting a, a purchaser or a rental, you know, person that needs it. So I think it's important there. Second question, Mr. Chair, through you. So, so we've got, we've got other things on this list that, you know, I really struggle with why we need them on here. You know, when we look at attainable, or we look at, uh, a CIP. To me, the CIP, you know, that has the most punch is the largest CIP that, that is available. And I don't know if, I don't, I don't really know if, if, uh, developers can stack these CIPs and, and pick and choose two or three, you know, out of the list. And if that's the case, I would look at, uh, a CIP such as cash in lieu of parkland fees as, and be get, community benefits. I'd really question that one. Why we would have that particular CIP? You know, we know, we know that we're short on, on parkland, you know? And, uh, we also are getting ready to hear from the province what community benefits are going to be. Why would, why would we give that money back? Through you, Mr. Chair.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, um, in regards to stacking the programs, um, you can stack the facade and building improvement one. So that would be somebody that might want to fix up the bones of their building, that's a building improvement. And the facade, so you can stack those two, um, you can within the existing programs. With the, within the, what I'm going to call the program area of attainable housing, you can stack those programs. But you can't, you can't stack the commercial TIG, for example, with the other programs.
But you could, you could add, you could get attainable rental housing tax increment. You could also, uh, apply for the cash in lieu of parkland fees and so you could do those two or three. I, I, I come back to, to, uh, what is our competitive position? Do we, do we need to be this competitive with our, with our, uh, other municipalities? I go back to the region's presentation of 45,000 residents in the Town of Lincoln in 2051. And the answer to why we got a large part of that around the region was because people want to live in Lincoln. That's what they said to us. So why would we hand money out where it's not needed to be handed out? I'm all in for, for incentivizing things that, that we need to incentivize. But I really look at some of these items on here and question why we need them, why they're there. The larger ones, I'm in. But these, some of these, you know, planning and building permit, uh, fees grant. Really? Do we, we need to give that money back? I mean, we're, we're incentivizing the bigger part of it. And yet we're, we're adding these other items in, they're just taking, taking money away that I personally think we don't have to, to, uh, shell out.
So, Mr. Chairman, those programs are focused towards attainable housing. And, um, there was a report and we've included some of the statistics in the, uh, in this, uh, CIP. But there's a real need, what we call the core housing need, and these are people that, um, their housing's not suitable because of the size of their family. They can't afford it, um, it's not in good shape. So there, there are, there, there is, um, quite a hu, a high number of, um, people in what we call core housing need. So we were trying to look at ways to encourage, um, whether it's the nonprofit sector or private developers to build some rental accommodation, um, that is affordable in nature. So that's the reason why there is quite a range of programs. The other thing to keep in mind with any CIP, you can have them in your CIP, but you don't necessarily have to activate all programs. So what you can do is you can, you can do some monitoring and say, wow, we're not going to, we're, it's in our CIP. But maybe for the first couple of years, we won't activate it. See how things go. And if you're not getting any uptake in affordable housing, then maybe you activate the program. So you do have that option as well.
Okay, one final question, Mr. Chair. So I, I think I heard you mention a green, a green grant of some kind. Can you talk to that? I, I, I'm thinking that that is something that, that we would do for all development by, if I'm reading that right.
So just to give you an example, so the facade and building improvement grants, um, we've increased the funding for those. If they, as an example, incorporate some environmental features, they could be things like, um, doing some permeable pavers within their development. Putting on what they call, I'm going to get this backwards. I think it's high alab, albio, veto roof, which is basically a white membrane, um, to cut down on the heat. So if they're going to replace their roof, for example, as part of the building improvement grant, you give them a higher grant to do something that's more environmentally sustainable. So it's those types of things. For the, the larger projects that would be subject to a tax increment financing grant. There are some minimum environmental criteria that they need to incorporate as part of their proposal. We've left it so that it's sort of a menu that you can pick, but you need to get a certain amount of points in order to be eligible.
So just so I'm clear, so, so are we incentivizing geothermal? And are we incentivizing, um, you know, roughed-in EV in their, in their parking lots? And, and so is, are we, so we are incentive, if that's the case, then we are incentivizing developers to do that.
As part of the C, uh, uh, as part of the specific program, um, there will be an incentive. So if you put in, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. If you put in, um, geothermal, for example, you're going to get more points than if you just put in native plant species, for example. So there, it's a point system. The more environmental features you put in, the higher your points. But you still have to have a minimum amount of design features and environmental sustainability features in order, for your project, in order to be eligible for the grant. But what it does is it gives the developer a bit of flexibility to sort of pick and choose the ones that would be applicable. As well, there are some utility companies that are also funding some of these things, like geothermal, for example.
Well, thank you for that. And, uh, again, I would, I would question that, that outlay. You know, I think we have a developer in town that has, uh, come with all of that because he's, he feels strongly that that's the right thing to do. So I would question the need for those types of incentives. And, and just put it to the, to the developers. We're, we're expecting, you know, that these, these types of, of green, um, green, this type of green building is what we, we do here in this town. So just some feedback. So just some feedback tonight on various pieces. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McIllic, please go ahead. Counselor. Counselor McIllic, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to staff. Certainly appreciate and reviewed this report. It is very in-depth and there is, there is a lot of reading material information here to go through. So one of the things is capping the CIPs, you know, in order so we can fund them. Is there any concern about this possibly stifling development? If one development gets a CIP and another one doesn't? Is there such, is there any concern about the fairness of a CIP with regards to new or redevelopment?
Mr. Chairman, can I turn that question over to Lawrence?
Sure. Through, through the chair, through Counselor McIllic. No, I don't think so. It's kind of like when, when we go for procurements. As long as you put the guidelines, the rules and the requirements out in front, you're fair and transparent with them, like a procurement process. As long as you do the same, whether you're doing rounds, multiple rounds, if you tell them the criteria they're being engaged on and you tell them there's limited funds, all parties are treated fairly. Does it have the potential to limit growth? I, I would say no. If I go back to Counselor McPherson's discussion, that people are trying to get into Lincoln, they're going to come anyways. This is just another tool that may help others that may be on the edge or may not get in there. But I don't think it would stifle. I think as long as we're fair and transparent, we're clear on the rules, we have specific guidelines, and obviously, we take consultation from the broader community about what they're looking for and what they need. I, I, I think we can get around that, that little bit of a hurdle.
And Chair, if I may jump in as well to the Counselor's comments. So I mean, when it comes to the economic development side, Counselor, especially on, on the private sector business, industrial development or, or value-added agriculture, these communities are used to sort of capping on the funding programs, a little bit of a first-come, first-served basis. So I, I think they know the game. They, they're, you know, willing to sort of work with these rules. And, and so I don't think they'd be capping investments. In fact, maybe it would be pushing them to act a little bit faster, quite frankly.
Thank you for those responses. I just, I, I share similar concerns and thoughts to Counselor McPherson that if developers are willing to do what you've just stated anyway, whether they get the CIP or not, because they were too late in acquiring them, then is there a true need for those CIPs, especially when we are living in a, an extremely marketable community? Where people want to come here? And perhaps there may be a premium to that. I don't know, because I'm already living here. So again, like, CIPs, sure. Like, when, when it comes to attainable and affordable housing, definitely. It's very tough to be able to source that sort of housing here. And we may need to incentivize that. But when it comes to the taxpayers' dollar and the possibility of just giving it because it's there and available, that, that is a concern of mine. So that's that point that I bring up. And if I may, one more question.
Absolutely.
With our attainable and affordable housing-type CIPs and that sort of thing, one of the things I heard from a developer recently was that very tough to build or construct condos or apartments that are plus-two, two units or plus-two bedrooms. Is there any thought that we should maybe look at, perhaps incentivizing? If we're looking to incentivize affordable or attainable housing, developers to build three-bedroom apartments? To accommodate a family of, say, five or four?
So, Mr. Chairman, to answer the two questions, I'll start with the latter question first. If we look at our, so there was some work done on core housing needs. The need is actually, there is a higher need actually for the smaller one-bedroom units. For, for example, you've got seniors on fixed incomes and you've also got people that are working at, you know, entry-level type jobs. So there actually is a need. It's not to say there isn't a need for the larger units, but there is definitely more of a need for the smaller units in, in this community. In regards to the first question about incentivizing, the intent is only to incentivize the affordable or attainable housing units and incentivize the commercial floor space. Because there is a need to increase, you know, the commercial floor space in town because you need additional commercial assessment, it creates jobs, it increases your taxes. There is a, a need to increase our tourism accommodation. So we want the tourists to stay here longer. So the intent is not to incentivize every single type of residential. It's, it's going to be focused on the attainable housing units.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, the concern I have is, is that there are houses that, with, with, you know, with three-bedroom type houses that are, they're disappearing from the rental market. And these people are, you know, they're, they're forced to make difficult decisions as to where they're going to live. And if there's no, you know, nowhere to, nowhere to, to move these folks, then we have to look at finding ways to accommodate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair Brene. So when I was reading the reports today, I, I was pleasantly surprised by what I was seeing. And I, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing with this, what's coming forward. I know, Staff, this has been on your radar for quite some time to, you know, look at the CIP programs and to, to tweak them and, and make changes. And I'm especially happy with the attainable housing piece. I think that's really going in the right direction. And we really need to focus on incentivizing attainable housing and also the planning permits. I think that'll, that'll definitely encourage people to come here and build something that we're, that we really need in our community. If those planning permits are incentivized and the attainable housing themselves, the buildings or whatever units they're making. So I'm really happy to see that. My only question around the changes is with the heritage grants. And it, it absolutely makes sense to me that it, it doesn't belong in the CIP. I'm just wondering, moving forward, so it would, it'll be part of the Heritage Committee's budget. Currently, we have the region matches dollar-for-dollar on our incentive program now, from what I understand. So there, would there still be some, some region funding towards our heritage buildings and the incentive?
So, Mr. Chairman, the region has changed a lot of their incentive programs and they're phasing a number of those out. So my understanding is unless they change it, at the end of this year, they're not going to be providing matching funding. So as part of reviewing the heritage budget, it would be important to sort of look at, look at that aspect of it. So for example, right now, the town was paying 25%. The region was paying 25% and the applicant was paying 50%. So it's going to be important as part of the budget process to make sure that you've got, you know, the correct dollars that do take into account the fact that the region will, will be eliminating their funding at some point. But I believe it's at the end of this year.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you very much to all the staff for all the work that's gone into this. It's been an incredible amount of work, I'm sure. And we've got a ways to go, but I'm very happy with the direction that we're going. Thank you, Chair Brene.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go to Mayor Easton and then we'll follow with Counselor Russell. Mayor Easton, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the first thing I would say is that on the issue of qualifying the buyer, I would ask that, that we, that we clarify this entire issue. Because it's my understanding that, that anyone that's receiving any kind of subsidy is, is being qualified either through the region or through the, in some cases, private enterprise who are, are building the units. So if, if we approve a certain number of units and, and we approve the profile, I am, I am not aware that people are just sliding in there, that the qualifications are being done. So I'd like to see some, an accurate response to that question. I mean, certainly, the region does qualification, no question about it. Certainly, when we went and visited private enterprise or the nonprofits, they were qualifying. They were selecting groups of people to live together based on a whole lot of different criteria. So I'm not willing to accept that there's no qualifying going on.
So maybe, Mr. Chairman, I could maybe clarify it. I think my focus was more on the ownership. So what, you are correct that if, you know, if you're looking for a rent geared to income and the region is providing you with rent geared to income, they will qualify you. That's part of, that, that is part of the process and you've got to provide proof every year. When you're dealing with a nonprofit and they are renting those units out, they will qualify their purchasers. So on, on, on more the rental side, that is happening. But in regards to, I, I believe where the Counselor's concern was, was more on the ownership side. If they are, if a private developer is selling a unit for $470,000, they don't qualify the purchaser. They just, they just say, you know, I'm selling this unit, this is the sale price. And that one would qualify as affordable housing. So I believe it's more on the ownership side versus the rental side.
So you'll...
But we will confirm all that.
You will confirm that. That's good. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think this report is really moving in the right direction. I'm happy that rural and industrial will not be denied. I see huge opportunity coming up in that area. And I guess that's where my first question is then to Mr. DeAni. What does that opportunity look, look like? And, and I certainly like the idea of caps, but I think this is a particular area of, of growth. If he has any comments about that, I'd be interested.
Thank you, Madam Marion, through you, through the chair to you. I mean, I, as I said in, in my remarks, fully supportive of, of the, the changes to the industrial rural area CIP. It will help sort of, you know, ensure financial sustainability moving forward, but also make sure that we can sort of spread the wealth in essence and attract more investment. So I do still think it, or see it as a, as a major economic driver to help incentivize some value-added agriculture. We have seen some successes in that. In addition, we know there are a few parcels here in our industrial park that some purchasers are eyeing. And some, you know, private sector companies are looking to acquire to, to build or move their businesses here to our community. So I do see it as, as being a tool to incentivize and make sure that happens. So I still see growth in that. And I still see that, you know, be supportive of, of our economic development strategy as well. And I think maybe Kathleen wanted to jump in as well.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to when we looked at that dollar amount, we also, as part of the financial analysis, that background information that we provided to Watson and Associates, we also looked at all of the different grant programs and how much, you know, was going out to those programs on average. And with the, for example, the industrial ones are a little bit higher, but with a lot of the rural ones, the grants are not actually substantially high. So I don't believe the cap is, is going to create a problem for those. But we, we did look at sort of the history of, of some of the grants in order to come up with those numbers.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, there's certainly been a lot of talk recently about removing industrial DCs across the region. And is that something that we could consider as an alternative to including it in this particular package? Instead of having, instead of including it in the CIP package, could we just reconsider the DC industrial charges?
So great question, Madam Marion. And our Director Wagner and I have had a few conversations about this. So I know when it comes to financial sustainability, he'll probably want to maybe chime in on that one. And I know Kathleen will probably talk about the need to amend DC bylaws if that's the case. But Director Wagner, over to you.
Thank, thank you, Bob. In regards to that, Mary Eastern, it's an interesting conversation. And, and we did have some, some discussions in that regards. I would have to look at what we, we would currently pay out through the SIPs, the dollar amount, and see if it was equivalent to the industrial DCs before goal. Because if it's not the same or not equivalent to, then we could potentially be moving from one category of DCs to another category and shifting the burden. Because we do need those DC funds to support projects and growth projects and such. So it's something I'd have to take a, a deeper or longer look at just to see whether the quantum or the dollar amount was relatively the same.
Okay. And I'm not suggesting that we do that because we are taking from one and giving to another. My point is that, you know, the foundational element to all of this is our financial, is financial sustainability. It's not just about, you know, taking things off the table, making it tighter, making it tougher. It's a matter of what's the whole package look like. And not only that, it has to do with what policies we make in one division have an impact on other divisions. And so there's money going back and forth from one major program pot to another. So, you know, I, I think these things are important to consider as well. Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to, on the issue of the industrial and rural CIPs, Mr. DeAni, is there, is there a model? Or is there a way that you can describe what the future might look like with that? Do we know enough about those changes that we're talking about or the growth that we're talking about that we could actually make some projections in that, in that package of incentives?
So through you, Chair. I mean, good question, Madam Marion. I think we're always looking at modeling, trying to figure out, you know, on the change on these incentives, what it looks like in, in the future. I mean, I know a bunch of our, our value-added agricultural partners around the tourism and hospitality space are, are looking at, you know, the CIP, looking at the changes. And we're in constant communication with them. So it's a little tough on the modeling side of things, but, but it is something we're continuing to look at.
Okay, can you quantify it?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I want to just pick away at green. Because now we've seen maybe one, you know, we've seen one, but we're starting to see it in other communities as well. We know it's possible. And so is it possible for us? I don't know who to ask this question to. Is it possible for us to, Kathleen, I think I'll ask you. So we said that this is the minimum. You have to meet the minimum. And then, and so you don't start getting any consideration at all until you, you've met this minimum. And I thought that's what you said, but I really wasn't too sure how robust you expected that to be. Because we want this, we want this investment. But now I think we know that we don't have to, we don't have to, we don't have to be looking for the developers to do nothing. So how much are we expecting them to do? I mean, I'm expecting, I think, a lot now that I see what it looks like. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Chairman, in regards to the minimum criteria, as I mentioned, there are a number that relate to environmental and also design, affordable housing, et cetera. So the one good thing about the way that the CIP is set up is the section that those criteria are in is actually an appendix to the CIP. So you also have the advantage that if you find that developers are actually starting to do this and over time you want them to do more, then you change the threshold. You can actually increase the threshold. You want a higher, higher points, points, for example. So there is some flexibility to modify those criteria as part of the monitoring process as well.
Right, okay. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, you know, there's, there's three things that I think, you know, one is the whole financial sustainability piece is very, very important. But I'm, I'm talking about it in terms of a how-to, not just bringing the hammer down and saying that we're not going to, we're not going to do this. There's a lot of reasons why we should be continuing to make this better and more useful to the community and to people that want to build here. to the community and, and to people that want to build here. But I do think that the level of strictness isn't a bad thing at all. And then, you know, the areas that, where we think there's going to be the biggest growth, rural and industrial, you know, we need to really make hay on that, um, value-added piece because that's where we're hearing now the biggest push is going to be. Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I see you have lots of notes there and, uh, I don't want to cut you off, but I do...
I'm done.
You're done. But if you have, if you have more as we go forward, we're about to start second round. So, if you have more, I will come back to you. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you to staff, um, piggybacking on a little bit of what the mayor mentioned about, uh, the viability and also what Counselor McPherson and Counselor Mikulak had talked about as far as possibly stripping away some of the, um, the aspects that may no longer be required if we just kind of stuck to the affordable, attainable housing aspect of things. Uh, question to Mr. Wagner. What would those financial, um, options look like? Should we, uh, take away some of the design, some of the, um, green infrastructure? Uh, how, how does that reshape that financial, uh, projection, uh, for those three recommendations? And this, again, I think those, uh, the numbers that, uh, we're seeing in three options, it, they are what they are, but again, is there any way that if we did strip away some of those other components that, uh, it would lessen some of that burden on our taxpayers?
Through the Chair to, to Counselor Russell, for sure. Um, because there's like six different streams. So, if we strip away one, we definitely can see some reduction in spending, but alternatively, you can reduce, reuse that reduction in one area to increase another area. So, it's kind of a, it's kind of a difficult question to answer totally because you could still spend the same amount except more focus in one area or you can maintain the lower level that you have currently as you allocate to the six programs, um, and reduce in other areas to, to find some savings. Like, as an example, we modeled out, uh, I think it was for affordable housing or for housing units themselves. We, we modeled out potential up to 150 K per annum when it was at its, when it's at, when it's at its peak. So, we can do all that and we can do all that through the budget process. Obviously, council gets to approve the final budget through the budget process. I know Kathleen, if, on the slide indicated later this year, will be coming back after consultation with programs and such. And we definitely can look at changes or tweaking dollar amounts for anything. Anything's, anything's possible.
Okay. And I, thank you and I appreciate that. And, uh, just to follow up, Mr. Chair, through you, um, one of the things that we've, again, in the three years and I guess it would be seven or eight months that I've been on council, we've heard, um, over and over again is that development is, is supposed to pay for development. And that's been one of the kind of the guiding pillars that we've always kind of utilized to shape our decisions on funding, on future projects, on infrastructure, uh, that type of thing. And it now seems that because we do have this shortfall, um, that we are asking our residents to pick up, uh, the tab for development that not, they normally wouldn't have had to, uh, because of the programs that we use to try to get development in here. And, um, it's one of those things that, that doesn't sit well with me and, uh, again, obviously option three right now as it stands is, uh, probably the, the better of the three, but i- if there's any way we can bring that number down to make it a little bit more palatable and have less impact on our residents, I would love to see that happen. And I think, uh, Counselor McPherson and Counselor Mikulak, uh, I think they were, were laser-focused in their, in their ideas of maybe stripping away some of those, um, wants, not necessarily needs, uh, in the program. So, I'll just, I'll leave it at that and, uh, we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, just for clarity, uh, it is both rental and, and purchases that, uh, what, we need to, we need to qualify the buyer and the renter. Uh, and I, and I guess I, I was going to the three options before, uh, Counselor Russell or got to them and, and, uh, I assume we're being asked to make a decision on these options tonight. Is that... Through you, Mr. Chair, to the Director of Finance, is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor McPherson. No, that's not, that's correct. I'm giving you an idea of what the potential costs are. Obviously, we have to see what the outlays are this year. If the, the projections shift out, it can gen, it can generally change the percentages needed. I did want to highlight to council that before we continue to engage in funding SIPs this year or next, it will be a potential cost or a cost to us as we have existing obligations by 2024 unless we top up what's going there. And we can defer the growth as Counselor Russell talked about. If we have a 3% per annum, we just have to take more away from that growth and fund this program. Currently, we, we put from the tax levy 105 K per annum, um, with a approximate 140 K of, um, dividends received from Penn West. By 2024, the cash outlay, if the projections hold, just, just shy of 500 K. So, I have to honor my existing obligations to try, we have, we have an obligation to pay those. So, I can divert more growth, but the growth is usually used to offset budget items. So, we'll be coming through the budget process and give you a more fulsome number or a more accurate number as it comes to there when we have an updated forecast. And I looked at it more instead of a, a single-year slice, which is historically what a lot of budgets are done like. I tried to look at it from a longer lens. This way, I could actually look at fiscal sustainability and try to bring up the DC reserves back to where they should be to offset the DC reductions and to also make sure that the CIP reserves were matching to our reserve policy. So, through the budget process, you have full authority to make those changes. I just wanted to give council an idea of what the potential costs would be and the cost, the way I would approach it from a fiscal management perspective to try to balance it with our existing obligations, knowing full well some of those cost shift and those cost shifts would allow me to fund some of the new programs. I, I am truly cognizant, uh, of the residents and what they would have to pay and I, I wouldn't suggest going to fund everything and make everything whole. I don't think that's prudent. I don't think it's what we historically see in program spends. They typically ramp up slowly. So, again, through the budget process, council will be able to approve all of that. We'll have consultation before those. Council can strip and enhance, remove, make changes and we can go from there. I just wanted to give council something that I, I think is appropriate, uh, an idea of the fiscal impacts of this. Um, I do think that they do add some value because it do increase growth and as you can see, um, as last year's budget process, our growth increased by 3%. Some of it should be or probably is attributable to some of these types of investments, but again, I just wanted to give council some insight on, to what the, the longer-term costs are for some of these things.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that, Director. So, we'll, we'll talk again at the budget, as I understand it. Okay. Great. And, and also, um, and I'm still trying to get my head around this whole equivalent piece versus, you know, DC paying for, for, um, CIPs through, through DC charges and things like that. So, I'm, I'm, my mind is racing around how are we funding equivalent versus, versus DC's charges? So, Mr. Director of Finance, I think we'll have to have a conversation because I don't get it, how that all works. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you, Chair Brene, for another opportunity. I, I do value these conversations we're having and as we have these conversations even tonight, like it, it generates new thoughts in my head. Um, through you to staff, um, or perhaps to Director Wagner, um, you, you, you mentioned current obligations. Are those obligations, are, are some of those obligations CIPs with regards to projects or applications that have not started yet? And if so, um, are those projects time-sensitive in terms of their CIP eligibility expiring? As I seem to recall, there was an application that was before us where we had to reapprove a CIP as it had, uh, expired.
Through, through the Chair to Counselor Mikulak, and I know Kathleen will be able to extrapolate on this. No, this doesn't include anything that hasn't been formally approved or pre-approved. We had, um, I believe, one builder and a, uh, an industrial, um, project that Paul was working with as a company, but those aren't included in this forecast or the current obligations because they haven't formally went through the approval process nor have they been approved. They, they, if they wanted to get funding, would be approved through any future programs assuming that they were eligible for those.
Okay. Thank you. I was just, you know, if there would be any financial changes that we're not aware of, you know, with developments not moving forward, let's say, uh, that were eligible for a CIP, I was just seeking clarification on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm not seeing any other hands, so there being no further discussion. I have a motion moved by Counselor Russell. The council received for information report AD-11-22 regarding the Community Improvement Plan Review, Financial Analysis, and the Draft Attainable Housing and Mixed Use Community Improvement Plan. And the council directs staff to include as part of the consultation process for the Draft Attainable Housing and Mixed Use Community Improvement Plan, the proposed changes to the Industrial and Rural Community Improvement Plan to amend the Development Charge Reduction Grant Programs to a Development Charge Reduction Equivalent Grant Program and to limit the Tax Increment Financing Grant Programs to a maximum of five years. And the council approving principle that staff come forward as part of the 2023 budget with A, the inclusion of funding for the Heritage Grant Program within the Heritage Budget; B, a request to increase funding to support the Community Improvement Plan Program, both existing and proposed; and that C, staff include as part of the 2023 Budget, a one, a multi-year financial forecast for the Community Improvement Plan Programs, Community Improvement Plan Reserves, Heritage Funding Programs, and Development Charge Repayments. And that council permit staff to accept applications for the Industrial and Rural Communities CIP with approval being put on hold pending any applications. Let me read that again. I might have taken it out of, uh, proper pronunciation there. With approval being put on hold pending any applications, being in alignment with the proposed changes to the Community Improvement Plan Programs and funding availability in 2023. And I will now ask our Deputy Clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote's now open. Thank you. I'll close that vote and that vote carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. So, um, we have the next eight-point, eight-point-two, point-two, eight-point-two, point-three, and eight-point-two, point-four that are going to be deferred to future meetings. So, we will now jump ahead to item number nine, confidential items. We have no confidential items this evening. And we are now at committee remarks. Do any committee have any remarks at this point? Seeing none. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 10:38 PM. Thank you.